I'm just quite interested. This is probably my fourth.
Is the betting time?
And I'm going, the last one, yeah.
Joel Caput, front page, that should have been new.
Well, that was, uh, this, the days? I didn't get the days.
Oh.
What was that all about?
Well, they had a little story on, uh, nine one one, you know, it's twenty year anniversary.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yep, and Joel was on there, and he said a few things, and a couple other people they had in there.
I was, uh, I just got tipped off with, uh, WJON dot com. They were doing these old stories on these small towns. That's interesting, you know, they did.
We will call the meeting to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We had a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. We will now recess the regular city council meeting at five thirty-one to conduct a public hearing on the rezoning request of Triple E Secure Storage. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Anybody that, okay, if you want to say something, you stand up to the podium, state your name, address, and just in a couple of minutes, tell us what you have to say.
All right. Um, first of all, my name is Julia Fraley, sixty-two thirty-five, Highway twenty-five, northeast in Foley, and I am the property owner directly to the north of the proposed rezoned plat. We were at the planning commission, and the only thing I really want to say is that we've not had any contact with the folks that are representing this, um, building project or the rezoning, but we do have concerns in reference to egress and ingress of that particular parcel of land. How is it going to be entered upon? How is it going to affect the neighbors surrounding it?
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Just stand up to the podium, give your name, address, and...
Dwayne Foss, sixty-one forty-nine, Highway twenty-five, Foley, Minnesota, and I own the property south of this deal. Got your letter about going to rezone to the A or the industrial and the business. Was not clear on what can really happen when it gets zoned to an industrial and a business. Who decides what business goes in where, and then with A one, or the industrial one there, do you get manufacturing in there? I know you're talking storage units, but once you got the storage units up, can you start renting them out to do manufacturing, uh, daycare, anything like that? And same with the business, what kind of business are you, who's in control of what kind of business can go there?
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Okay, it's five thirty-four, and we will reconvene the regular city council meeting. Now, everyone in the council here has read the material that we were sent. Is there a motion adopting Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty approving rezoning of Triple E Secure Storage? Oops, Sarah.
Mr. Mayor, Council, just since we have some people in attendance here, um, to be clear, the resolution that's in front of you is only to address the rezoning and not the site plan. That item was tabled at the planning commission and will need to go back through because of discussion on issues with access and a few other items. So this rezoning would just be the first step. We would still have to follow up with the site plan. The planning commission needs to make a recommendation, and then that would need to come forward to the city council for approval. So, um, I just want to make that clear that there are a couple items there are still, we are still working on. I think we have some potential resolution, but that's really for the planning commission to make a recommendation on first.
Okay. Is there a motion adopting Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty approving rezoning of Triple E Secure Storage?
So.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, I'd like to see you people back at the planning commission. So this is just for rezoning. At the planning commission, that's where your answers can be answered to our ability before we pass this on to the council. So please attend our next meeting. That's all I have.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We will now recess the regular city council meeting at five thirty-seven to conduct a public hearing on the temporary liquor license of Pantown Brewery to be held at Grand Champion Meats on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Okay, at five thirty-eight, we will reconvene the regular city council meeting. Can I get a motion approving the request for the liquor license?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We will now hear from the Foley Fire Relief Update from Brian Mosher.
Good evening, council members. Um, as per required, it's my yearly duty to come talk to you guys and tell us how, tell you how we're doing. Um, as of right now, um, the sheet that I'm hoping Sarah forwarded to you, um, of course, the big number that we always worry about is line seven at the very bottom. Uh, we just want to make sure that's not in the red, and that means we're doing good, which, uh, to show we do have a surplus, we're not in the red, so it was with the uncertainties of last year and this year present, um, that's good news for us. Um, the only, uh, other thing to give another note to is you'll see under the lines K, um, that's how much we paid out in pensions this year. So the fact that we paid out that much in pension uh, due to, for retirees and still maintained was also a good sign for us. Which brings me to the next point. This would be more futuristic. Um, we always wait to see what the third quarter does, but right now with that much surplus, um, we're at the moment where we would do a raise per, depending on where the final third quarter would end up. Um, none of that's decided tonight until I get to my quarter report. This is more or less just a formal heads up that right now with that surplus, we'll probably be doing a meeting in, well, at our meeting in October, we'll decide, uh, what a functional number is. Um, by law, I'm supposed to give the money away, so if we got money there, I gotta give it to the guys that earned it, so. That's more or less just a heads up for the future. If things keep going the way they're going, we're sitting good that way, so. If there's any questions you guys have, otherwise usually, like I said, as long as we're in the green, that's usually the good thing, so. And then again, this is the special retirement fund, this is not the general fund, so this is hundred percent retirement money for the firefighters, so.
Does anyone have any questions for him? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now have a wastewater project update by Paul Safford from Bolton and Mink.
Oh, there you go, knocking stuff over. All right. Do you have copies of that updated letter?
Thank you.
I did, this is I forwarded it earlier today.
Yeah, this is the same thing, okay.
Yeah, I forwarded it to Bailey.
Looking out with you some.
Yeah, we already.
I, I already printed it.
Yep.
Do you have an extra?
I do. So we're just going through, um, the permitting process with the MPCA on their regional, uh, treatment, on the lift station and forced main project to the city of St. Cloud. And as we've gone through the process, um, as of last Monday, we've learned of a new hiccup in our schedule. Uh, the, the permitting process is going to take until January. The MPCA hasn't reviewed the permit application that was submitted in April, and they started last week. So they informed us of last week that we needed to, uh, get, go through that process. We thought they were underway, uh, based on previous conversations we had with them. But, uh, just the impact of that is in order to be, uh, have the whole project be fundable with loan and grant dollars, it pushes back the schedule that we can actually receive bids and award the project to a general contractor. Um, so the impact overall for that schedule is we're, we're doing the permitting through January of twenty twenty-two. We would then do bidding in February and March of, uh, twenty twenty-two. We would award the contract and then a fifteen to eighteen months of construction, depending on the contractor that wins the work and how they perform the work. And then, and, and that's really the process that we're under, and the, and the schedule that we're, uh, working from. So that's, that's an update even from two weeks ago where we were thinking we were bidding in November. So I just wanted to provide that update to the council and see if you guys have any questions overall on the project or on the schedule specifically.
Do we have a route planned yet?
Yep. The, the, the final plans and specs have been submitted to the MPCA. The, the, all of the routing has been done and designed.
Easements paid for? Not yet.
Not yet.
Of course. What kind of number is that going to be, or don't we know, or can't we say?
They're working through that process.
There, Councilmember Ross, there is money, we do have money budgeted as part of the design for that acquisition cost.
Is there any chance, now, I didn't realize it was going to take over a year to do. I...
So, given the, the, the climate of contracting and the availability of materials, there's a lot of uncertainty in how, on delivery dates and, and just the overall market of, uh, getting material into the site and getting it done. So our intention is to provide as open of a schedule as possible so a contractor can decide how to best deliver that as economically as possible to the city of Foley. So they may be done in three months. I doubt that, but it's possible if someone comes in with a, a big enough crew and, uh, has the material on site to deliver it that quickly. So our intention is to give them as much flexibility as possible so it can fit into their schedule, and we can coordinate delivery of equipment. I mean, everything from hurricanes and COVID has affected schedules in the last eighteen months, so.
Would we, when we put the bids out, can we put in there, we'd like it done as soon as possible?
There's, there's, we could work through some milestones and some incentives for them to be paid early if they complete early. And so there's some things we can work through on that to encourage, uh, quicker delivery.
So with this lift station, do we have to give you our blessing to go ahead and do that too, laying lift station?
Yeah, I would, I would like that on the record, um, that change and that memo you got prior. Would you maybe, could we just clarify too what the costs are? Because we had some budgeted costs initially for upgrading the controls, if I understand correctly, and maybe Mark can answer that even. For that laying lift station, I think we estimated three hundred thousand, but there was some ready in the budget.
We had the, we were going to put the grinder chopper in there for forty-five thousand, and then we would add to update the controls to be compatible with the old controls. That would have been our only lift station that would have been old, so we would have been updating it now in a few years probably to tie onto the new system. So sixty thousand, maybe, you know, we're forty-five for that, probably ten thousand for the controls right away now, and we'd be on the old system, so.
And the intention is to spend that money now so that you don't throw that equipment away in five years when the rest of the station would need to be upgraded. So it was a discussion with staff that we had that was pretty thorough that it, we came to the recommendation to do the work now in order to get the best bang for your buck as a city.
That was what we were talking about, a whole new replacement, rather than an upgrade, we're replacing the whole, uh, lift?
Yes, so that's what the plan is now, and what you're talking about now is, uh, our fee to design that, to do that design work. But then it would be incorporated with the entire project as, as that bid number.
Does anyone else have any questions for him?
Can you see this date being moved up at all by him?
So I actually, we, we tried to, we're, we're working through to how to crush down that schedule as possible. Um, in, built into it is a thirty day required city review of the permit, which we won't need. And so this is worst case right now. Um, we're doing our best to try to get it moved down. There is a sixty day mandatory public publishing of the permit that we can't do anything about. So it's possible we can move the bidding into December, but not before then. So we're doing everything we can to do that, so.
But this, this all hinges on the MPCA, basically.
Yep, so it's, we're up to their, we're at the mercy of their staff.
But can I, we did get the affluent limits today?
Yes.
They finally came, that was what came late this afternoon?
Yes.
Okay, so we've been waiting on that for weeks. So that is finally through, so now we have a little more control, and we're going to move to the next step.
Yep.
To try to get this moving along.
Yep, and the, the mayor actually signed a response for me today, so we will send that tomorrow. So under twenty-four hour return time is what we're shooting for as we work with their staff. So they're, they're actually working on it now, so that's actually been a, a good, uh, change. We're having communication and we're getting staff to respond to us.
Any other questions?
How much directional boring are we going to have to do?
There is, there's significant directional boring. I mean, so it, the intention is to leave that up to the contractor to, to provide the most economical places, uh, the most economical delivery of the pipeline, because you get rid of restoration and some other things on the directional boring. It may actually be cheaper than open cutting, but we're going to let the contractor dictate where we can, how they're going to deliver that. So I can't tell you a mileage or a footage.
Anything else?
And Mr. Mayor, if I could have the council just act upon that laying lift station, just since it's a significant change, to make sure that that's the direction that you wish to go with.
You need a motion, or you just want?
I'd appreciate a motion.
I'll make that motion that we replace laying lift station.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Push them if you can, Paul.
Will do, will do.
We will now move on to the twenty twenty-two budget discussion. Now, you all got the paperwork from Sarah. Does anybody have any comments?
Well, it looks better than the one we started.
Any other discussion? Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash eighteen approving the preliminary levy?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We have a, Bart's tied up in here. Obviously, we're.
Okay, we will move on to, uh, is there anyone here wishing to speak for the open forum?
Do you have to set the truth in taxation? I don't know why that's on there.
Well, now the truth in taxation hearing, do we have to have that?
Do you have to set the truth in taxation or not?
No.
Oh, that's just on the veranda.
No.
We will now move on to department reports. And Bart is not here, so we'll move on to city engineer Jared Griffith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Um, I should have a couple of things update you on tonight. Uh, one being John Street. I'm sure some of you are all have noticed the construction that started out there. Uh, plan is today to get done with all the removals, tomorrow do the backfilling, um, and then possibly start concrete. Was scheduled for concrete for tomorrow. Uh, removals took a little longer, so we're still, I'm still assuming we'll have concrete in tomorrow, uh, and then Batumis paving next week. That is our plan for, for John Street. Any questions?
That, the police building, right?
Yes.
By there? Now, is the ground under there? Questionable.
What does it look like currently?
Can I jump in here? I'll take that being, yeah, it wasn't out today. So when they removed everything today, we're finding under the northwest part of the police garage is a big hollow area. Um, they actually stuck a tape measure in about five feet, and another one is about three, three and a half feet. So, but the wall on the police garage is solid, so it's not coming from the outside in. Has nothing to do with what's going on there. This has probably been void for a long time. Being we got the mess, we're probably going to work with JR tomorrow, concrete, and cut a square out of there, four feet, three feet into the garage, cut that out of there and see what's going on. We're wondering, and I say, I haven't even talked to Jared, because this is at two, three o'clock this afternoon. We're wondering if it was running from that alley when it was running against the building so bad there for that long? Did it run through somehow, and it, that was a shortcut to the road? It's whitewashed, and we don't know. We'll open up tomorrow. We're going to have a little, this is going to be an added expense of ours, but we're here, we got to do it, find out before that floor slowly caves in. And it's definitely on the inside. The building has nothing to do with the outside. They have it exposed now, so.
Okay. That was it, Jared.
So anyhow, go ahead, sorry about that, being a part of it.
Any other questions on John Street?
Nope.
Nope, all right, then I'll move on to their item here. Uh, update you on the Chunk I twenty-three project.
I got a question. So if it was the alley from the beginning, then why are we paying if it was on the first time we tried to reslope all that?
This goes, this will be back from previous. Yeah, when it ran against the building, we have it sloped, and they redid it, they sloped it away from the building for all those years from oh seven to whatever, before we put the downspouts and everything, it kicked against the building.
Okay.
So yeah, nothing to do with the nineteen project. I think it was nineteen?
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? Okay, the other item would be the Chunk I twenty-three project update. Um, we have, um, submitted our final plans, both our utility project and MINDOT has submitted their projects to the state. Um, and part of, you know, dealing with MINDOT and working within the right of way is any small utility real, um, relocations or adjustments due to city, city utilities, the city is on the hook for those relocations. Um, we knew that going in, um, we, just with a project like, you know, with that in mind, you don't know the extent of that relocation until you have the final design done, both with MINDOT's impacts and our city utility impacts. Um, with that being said, we do now have those final numbers. Um, and Lumen sent a proposal for re, uh, reimbursement for fifty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. It is for, and if you can, for the next.
Do you want to go to the next one?
Yeah. Um, it's at the location in between ninth and eighth. Um, and there are four copper lines that they need to, four, yeah, four copper lines that they need to relocate in that bubble there that are the impacts to our, um, sanitary line. Plan is to move those to the right of way. Uh, there will be some, um, some boring of that underneath the, that approach there that, and, um, yeah, most of the costs, I do have a breakdown of that fifty-three thousand dollars and twenty-three thousand, call it twenty-four thousand is in materials, and seventeen is in splicing. Um, the rest are engineering, construction costs overhead, stuff like that. So they did send a detailed estimate on that fifty-three thousand dollars. With that, um, open up, any questions you may have?
What was the original estimate on this project?
On our project?
Yeah, when we, because we thought we might have to move some of this.
As far as, uh, what we estimated, the small utility relocation? Um, if I remember right, it was in that fifteen to twenty range, but I, I don't hundred percent remember that right now.
Quite a big jump, isn't it?
One thing you don't know is, no one knew where these lines were till the project's designed.
Okay.
And there's four of them, which I never knew there was four out there even.
Right.
Yeah.
So are they just cutting and abandoning them and then splicing them, or pulling them all out of the ground, or?
They are placing new lines at the right of way, so I don't, they're not abandoning them, they're taking them on, removing them, um, and then putting new ones in at the location, at the right of way they're taken. I think everything along this corridor from eighth down to Lord is all getting pushed to the right of way.
It'll still be copper, correct?
Yes, yes.
Anyone have any other questions for him? Okay, then we will move on to Public Works and Fire Department, Mark Patkus.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. Very busy in Public Works, starting to get stuff done in the next two months. In your packet, you have information on the, we placing a pickup out of this year's budget yet? This is through Sourcewell, which is National Fleet Group. This one would be expended, we have one truck expended, expended to, excuse me, against each fund. This is the sewer one, mine's water, they all go against one fund. Any questions on this or? We actually had two in this year's budget, we actually had three in this year's budget. Could we keep pushing them back? One went to the park structure, one will be next year and this one, this one here will be this year. Then it'll be a plow with this one, with the sale of the old one, which we'll come back on.
I'm assuming you want this before winter?
I heard maybe fourteen to sixteen weeks. Christ Hill told me, don't hold your breath. They just opened these up August, I missed last meeting by a couple of days. They just opened them up August, whatever. So. Hopefully see it by the end of the year maybe.
So the other truck is usable up to the?
We have that and we also have, yeah, we have two one-ton pickups we use, so, and we have the nine oh six, so. It's just different things that are different, you know, the trails and stuff they can use it on.
Okay. Other questions or? Anybody have any questions? Anything else, Mark?
I assume you have to have a motion on that?
Yes, I do.
Would that be given an item?
Yeah, we do need a motion to approve that capital purchase.
Cool. Could I get a motion to approve the purchase of the Chevrolet Silverado?
Oh, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Just a couple of the quick things on the public works side. The seal coating that we budgeted for this year on the south end is all done, it's all down. Few more weeks, I'll sweep it up and we'll see how it holds up, you know, we haven't done it for a few years. Um, salt shed, all the dirt with the assistance of the county, all the, uh, we had quite a bit of dirt correction down there. So they helped us and we got that all corrected and the piers are all poured. Hopefully next week bunkers will come, that's what holds the salt in and the building is sitting down, they're ready to go up. So hopefully we'll see that by the end of the month or so. Anything else on public work side, otherwise two quick things on the, yes, sir.
What, um, so being we had a drought and no one was using the compost, it worked out well for the days it was open. But now, is there any way we can open it up back all the time so that it's more usable for the citizens? Cause now people are actually cutting their grass and just taking care of their yards and stuff. Where when you have only three days, it's hard for a lot of people to get on those days or if it's raining or, or whatever stipulations come up.
We got money in for a gate for next year, could we move that up? You working on that? It's budget time, now's the time to think about it.
Well, a gate would be nice, I guess.
Sartell's open two days a week. I was, I'll find out some other cities, a lot of cities are only two to three days a week. And Sartell isn't as long as ours, I was, I was talking to John at school.
Yeah, I like, I like just the shorter time because we don't have, seem to have as much trouble that way.
Well. It's nice to have it open more than two days, understand that. But unfortunately we have to have a bad element that ruins it for everybody. What was the cost of that gate?
Rough estimate was eight thousand, but that wasn't with all controls either, so.
Okay.
That was one verbal quote.
Yeah.
I will say that.
Well, if we put a gate up there, I'd like to see some more numbers on that before we decide.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to wait on that.
Be honest, you wouldn't see it till summer anyhow or spring.
By time, yeah.
I can find what other cities are doing, Mr. Mayor, if you want to, Malacca and Sartre Rapids and. Becker had a gate and theirs was a nightmare. So we got to find, not, sorry Becker, but we got to find out what they did and don't do it what they did, you know.
Okay, and you had something on the fire department?
Yeah, there's those two things I mentioned. Just a couple of things were happening at the fire hall, just so you guys are knowing, know they're going on there. This Saturday, um, through Snap Fitness, they're doing like a boot camp out there. They wanted to do something for nine eleven, a stair climb thing, uh, Snap corporate gets in, so they're going to do a boot camp there. In it, they're going to try to roll it into a recruitment thing. They're kind of taking care of setting it all up, um, the Snap people are. Just so you know, they'll, they'll be using our building and we'll be there with them. So that'll be this Saturday. Eight o'clock if you want to drink some fire hose and whatever else you do at a boot camp, Dwayne. Yeah, so that's there and then we're having our fire department, Fire Prevention Week, open house Saturday, October second. Uh, from eleven to one. I gotta think when it's eleven to one, I apologize, I'll verify the times. But they were having that that day also and our raffles at noon that day. I'm not, they have different ideas, the, uh, committee's working on. But just so you know, it's a city building with everything going on, we still plan on doing that. Anything else?
Anybody have any further questions for him? Okay, we'll move on to Sarah Brun in the administration.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Council, um, one item I threw in your packet was, um, the return of driver's examiner to use our space. Um, they have requested an extension, they exercised the option of the extension of the lease. And that just means that they use our space on the first Tuesday of every month to conduct driver's tests. Um, no concerns with that moving forward. Um, actually, I'm hoping they can come back because a lot of people are looking for those services. Um, they're working on hiring some additional people and hope they can do that later this fall. Um, so we'll kind of keep you posted on where that's at. Um, and then one thing that just got thrown in right at the end before we sent out packet was the pool update from the, um, pool manager, Emma Brenney. Uh, really, uh, good pool year as far as revenues. It was hot, it was dry, um, a lot of kids came in and out of that pool and that was great to see. Um, we have talked, we had our closing meeting for the end of the year, we have some ideas for next year. Um, but we're really excited that that was an opportunity for the community this year. Um, and if you have any questions, I can certainly answer those at this time or get you in touch with Emma if you have anything else that you want some more information on. But, um, wanted to make sure that you were aware of how we did and how we, how we did really do well as far as the revenue standpoint this year. So that helps, um, cut into some of those expenses that we had as well. Uh, our interim chief, um, will not be back. There's multiple calls going on right now, they're tied up with a couple of things. So if you have any questions on the police report, um, you can either email me or if you want to email, um, Chief Kaufman directly. Um, please feel free to do that, I apologize, um, for the inconvenience, but, um, he will not likely make it back. That's all I have. Unless you have questions for me.
Anybody have any questions for her? Any old business?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just Jared lives in Sartre Rapids. Sartre Rapids has three days a week on the compost. Monday, three to seven, Wednesday, twelve to seven, and Saturday, eight to four thirty. So Sartell's two days, I know, so we're right in line with the other cities are doing, you know. We'll keep looking, we'll get more information on everything, but.
Could I ask a question? Is that year round? The three days, two days a week or three days a week?
No, I believe they shut theirs down for the winter.
Yeah, I think they're.
Same with, uh, most cities shut them down in the winter.
I would just like to say that I'd probably go to the compost heap three days a week. And I'm never alone out there, I mean, people use it. So I don't know, um, I know that we've had problems, but it is something that we do provide to citizens that is actually used by the gardeners in town. So if, you know, if we could keep three days a week, I don't, you know, there's not an attendant out there, but you know, we had one terrible incident and it did cost us some money, but I don't think it's caused to really cut back on that. You know, because the six days a week was quite luxurious, so. Three seems like a big cutback already.
Okay, any new business? Could I get a motion to adjourn?
If I, and, and Council, I realize that this is out of order. The open forum, I was a little bit confused with when, uh, Officer Kaufman couldn't come in and kind of skipped over very quickly. Would it be possible for me to address my question?
Okay.
Again, Julie Fraley, F R A L E Y, Ms. Brun. You mentioned, um, you made one statement that there was a possible resolution to the access to the property concerning triple E storage. Is that a plan or something that we could view?
Yeah, that will, that will actually go out in the planning packet either tomorrow or Thursday. So that's a public packet, so you could just come and I could make a request and could provide that information for you. It is basically an option to utilize the existing access and allow the new, um, commercial development to, to use that access. Ms. Fraley, has anybody, uh, spoken to you about that option?
No, and we have done considerable amount of research.
Oh, so, so Mr. Wentzmann didn't come out and talk to you?
No one has spoken to us in reference to that option and this is the case from the beginning.
Okay. But yes, I do have that information, um, and that I can provide that to you if you want to just stop up and, and see me later this week.
All right, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
It's all moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, meeting's done.